All right, good evening. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a core of our board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that a notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if you'll please rise for the pledges and a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which...
If you'd please remain standing with us tonight. We have Reverend Amy Menke from Bastrop Cavalry Episcopal Church to offer our opening prayer this evening. Welcome.
Everyone, thank you for having me. Let us pray. Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts. And we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of all school events and for all the teachers, staff, students, and board members. We ask that you bless them abundantly and may they continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in their deliberations and help them to be wise in the decisions they make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in their leadership. Give them insight to lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and good. Help them to make decisions that are for the good of all and guard them from blind self-interest. Dear Lord, grant them humility to always seek your will in all that they do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and always, forever and ever. Amen.
All right, Mr. Edwards, would you take the privilege to introduce our student speaker of character education for the trade of April self-discipline?
Yes, I certainly will. I'd like to invite Luis, if you'll come up to the microphone. And you're looking very handsome, young man. I'm looking forward to it. That's a lot of looking good. Okay, let me introduce you all to Luis. Luis Rodriguez is a fourth grade student at Camino Real Elementary School. Luis is a thoughtful and soulful ten-year-old with a heart full of love and curiosity. Deeply rooted in his faith, he's the middle son of three and shares special bond with his mom. Math comes naturally to him and his big questions show just how deeply he thinks. He loves astronomy, baseball, choir, fishing, sunsets, and spontaneous road trips filled with music, food, and family. I could hang out with you, Luis. I'd like that. Kind and empathetic, Luis lights up every room he enters. Despite facing challenges, he's grown stronger and more grateful, inspiring those around him to live and love deeply. Thank you, Luis. Go ahead.
When will you start practicing self-discipline? Have you ever told yourself, "I'll do this tomorrow," and then tomorrow comes and goes? Yeah, me too, in fact. I almost did it again when writing this paper. It took more than one reminder from my mom before realizing that what I was writing on is something that I am struggling with, self-discipline. The truth is that playing Pokemon Go or throwing a few pitches with my brother is much more fun, and I wanted this to be perfect, which made writing it much harder to do but easier to set aside. But here's an actual truth, and I learned this while working through these very topics. Self-discipline isn't about being perfect and getting a fast result. It's about showing up even when it's hard and staying focused on your goal. Let me share a secret that can help all of us. Ten-year-old or my mom's age, I'm not going to say it out loud because she's sitting in the crowd and our drive is long. Self-discipline is a skill that will help us become who we really want to be. It will help us reach goals that seem to be hard to reach. It is more repetitive work than a fast result. It is also about control. Control of emotions, control of thoughts, control of not allowing other things distract you. Self-discipline is like a key. It unlocks the door to growth and the door to the life we dream of. It's almost like having a superpower inside of you that will help you accomplish things you may think are impossible. Recently, I have been struggling to read twenty minutes every day. It took a constant redirection from my mom and reminders from my teachers to put it back in my evening routine after school. Their self-discipline helped me to get back to reading, and I was also reminded how much I actually enjoy it. Your own self-discipline may help others around you, too. Some people, including myself, really have to practice it. Others do it easily. The great thing is that it is something we can all choose to do. We can choose to develop that skill. We do not have to get it right the first time or every time. What matters is that we keep going and we start over even when we are ready to quit. Imagine the pride you'll feel when you achieve something you thought was too hard because you stayed focused and changed what you wanted to do, what you needed to do. That is self, that is what self-discipline gives you. The ability to prove yourself that it is, was in you the entire time. It starts with one step. When will you start practicing self-discipline?
Luis, you are wise beyond your years. Well done. I do have, we do have a gift for you. Thank you so much for doing, being self-disciplined and preparing this for us. And I'd also like you to introduce your, your brother and your mom and if your grandparents made it in. Are they here?
No.
Okay, will you introduce your mom and brother at least?
My mom is named Natalie Constante, and my brother is named Julian Yadiel Rodriguez Constante.
That's wonderful. Trick question, how old is your mom? Don't do it, don't do it. Congrat, thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing it with us.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic. All right, we'll move on to our recognitions and special presentations. We have Bastrop Middle School Band, Anna Seines is here, our head band director.
Cases that, that took it fantastic, and we came home with superior ratings. We're super proud of the work they did. But more importantly, I think that, like, Breezy here is a great example of what it is to be in band. Last year, she's a percussionist, percussionist, and last year she learned how to play percussion for the first time. And as a seventh grader, you dive into the big school, the band, and it's a whole different thing because you're learning how to work together as, as a team. And what is that like when you've got fifty kids coming into a classroom at the same time? And how is that organized? What's your role in that place? And she's just blossomed as well as all the other kids. And so this is a really cool thing because it's not just our eighth graders, it's our seventh graders and our eighth graders who went to this contest, doing it for the first time, the older kids guiding the younger kids. And, and it's something that we are very thankful to be a part of every day and very thankful to you all for supporting us in what we do at the arts every, every day in all the band halls and choir rooms and all the places and the field. So, thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to Cedar Creek Middle School Band, Benjamin Edes, our head band director. Sure to speak loud.
Can we hand him a mic, though? Or just, you can stand at the mic reverse. Because our screen mic.
So you're saying you want him to stand up here?
If he wants to face the audience, he can just turn it. There you go.
Thank you for having me. I'm Benjamin Edes. I am the head band director at Cedar Creek Middle School, and thank you to Ms. Seines for kind of explaining UIL. That was most of the legwork, so thank you. This, the big trophy right here is for our non varsity band, which is led by Mr. Matthew Garcia Perez. He's been in the district for a few years, and this is actually the second year in a row that his group has received a sweepstakes, which means receiving the highest possible ratings in the concert and sight-reading portion, which is really an incredible accomplishment for him. He's a really wonderful person. I'm really lucky just to work with him. He couldn't be here. He actually has a rehearsal tonight for one of his own groups that he leads outside of the middle school band, so he's a really incredible guy. This plaque right here is for my band, which is the top band. We earned superior ratings in the stage portion, which was a dramatic improvement from last year, and then we received the rating of excellent in the sight-reading room. And so, which was also an improvement from last year. So I'm extremely proud of these kids also because we were able to take, you know, big steps forward both in concert and sight-reading this year. So it was a great year for band at Cedar Creek Middle School. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, moving along to Cedar Creek High School Girls Soccer. We have Rainey Raybay, our head girls soccer coach.
I don't usually, I'm not very sporty, so I don't usually need a microphone.
Hey, Coach.
Okay. These girls represent the Cedar Creek Girls Soccer Program. We had, we made it to the playoffs. We had, we demonstrated, they demonstrated grit and a never-die attitude. We had some clutch wins in the second round. They got us into the fourth-place spot, and this is the second year in a row that Cedar Creek Girls have made the playoffs, and so these seniors that are graduating have really established a legacy. We really appreciate, I also wanted to mention academically, the girls are fundamentally student athletes, and they represent the best of Cedar Creek High School. We appreciate the recognition of our program, and we're very proud to represent Cedar Creek High School. Thank you.
All right, now we're moving along to our Cedar Creek High School UIL State Powerlifting. Elena Monreal Consino. Our presenter tonight is Michael Savoy, our head powerlifting coach.
I'm Coach Savoy, I'm the head powerlifting coach.
Coach, can we get you, we're, by law, by law, we have to stream our meetings, so...
I'm Coach Savoy, I'm the head powerlifting coach at Cedar Creek High School. It was my pleasure this year to get to watch this, this young lady work. Keep things short, she got better every week. We entered into regionals about thirty pounds on a personal, your PR, about thirty pounds less than what we needed to get to state to hit a qualifying number. We were able to hit that number, which qualified her number twelve to go to state. When we entered, we had, we had a really good day. She did move up to number eleven, finished number eleven in state. Great thing is, she's, she's a junior, so we hit the same number next year, we'll be back doing this, and we'll bring our medal we win this year, next year. And even better, she's like number twelve in her class, so, great job.
Thank you, congratulations. All right, moving along to our Bastrop Area Livestock Show Grand Champions and Reserve Champions, Chesney Schwartz, our Bastrop High School Ag teacher, and Chad Gertz, our Cedar Creek High School Ag teacher.
Good evening. My name is Chad Gertz. I'm one of the two very proud agriculture science teachers at Cedar Creek High School. My partner teacher, shout out, Sierra Goodback there. It really is a team effort on our side of town, and I know here at BHS as well. It's a busy season for us with the livestock show. It is a UIL sanctioned event, so these students are, are students first, so I want to give a shout out to all students that were able to participate. On the Cedar Creek High School side, I want to give a huge shout out to Cameron Blodgett back there. Cameron, come up. So Cameron, this was his first year showing, he's a senior. I've had him since his freshman year, and he actually broke the cell records for Market Roilers with his chickens, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. So, very, very proud of this young man. And then his counterpart over there, Mr. Dalton Dilly, he's been showing pigs for me and for Cedar Creek High School and BISD for four years. Again, had him since his freshman year, and this year he got grand champion with his breeding gilt and a reserve grand champion with his market barrow for six thousand dollars. So I want to give a huge shout out to these two.
So I'm Chesney Schwartz, I'm one of three at BHS, and like Chad said, is it a team effort across everybody here on, here on campus to make sure that these kids are doing what they're supposed to do and make sure that their animals are, are prim and proper for show day? If I can get all my BHS kiddos to come up here, just so that way, get y'all recognized. On our Ag Mechanics side, we had to, we had two very, very talented individuals that welded up a project, Mr. Alex Slaton and Travis Alwine, they did great. And then our very first public speaking that we've ever done at Valspa this year was our very own Gabriela Lopez. She placed grand champion for us. And then two people that couldn't be here tonight because they were at other school events, they did very well with their rabbits. And then our very own Addison Moore did great in showmanship and reserve champion heifers. So we are so proud of you guys. You, you represent us very well every year.
All right, moving along here to Bastrop High School Band, our UIL regional solo and ensemble. We have Kenneth Gilbert, our head band director. Welcome.
Hey, how's it going, everybody?
Good.
So first, back in, on February first, we had forty-six Bastrop High School Band members attend the UIL Solo and Ensemble Contest. Yeah, come on up, guys. And, and, and so we, we missed the last board meeting for them to be recognized, and we have twenty-eight students that earned a superior rating or a one, and then we have fifteen students that are advancing to the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest in May. It always happens right after graduation, which was kind of a bummer, but, but they keep working on this. And so we had three soloists, one of them is Cash Lutz on trumpet, he's advancing to state on his trumpet solo. And then we had Savannah Salazar on her percussion solo. We had Viviana Robles on her flute solo, advancing, she's a freshman, advancing to the state contest. And then we had, how many percussionists?
Twelve.
Twelve percussionists that participated in an ensemble, class-one ensemble, and there, and those four guys are standing here, and they're advancing as well. And so we had fifteen students that will be going to the state solo and ensemble contest in the Austin area, and we're super proud of those guys. So go give them a hand, please. And then, moving on, we have next, we just attended the, the UIL Concert and Sight, I think, I'm thankful that there's a slide, so I know what I'm talking about. The UIL Concert and Sight Reading Contest, we have three concert bands at Bastrop High School that attended on April first and second. Our concert band this year went and made a excellent rating or a two in, on stage and in sight-reading. And then our symphonic band, directed by Mr. Gutierrez here, went and for the first time since 2021, earned the Sweepstakes Award, won in concert and sight-reading. And then our wind ensemble that I direct also earned the Sweepstakes Award for the eighth year in a row. So we're extremely proud of all of our students. We see tons of improvement every year. I just want to say a special thanks to our band directors, our middle school directors, Anna and Anna, and, and then Mr. Orion Wasaki and Mr. Jeffrey Gutierrez, who are amazing people to work with. Our students work very, very hard. They come to school really early in the morning, they stay late, they come for evenings, they go to all kinds of concerts and events. And I just want to thank Ms. Gabriel for her support as our principal. I want to thank the board for always supporting Fine Arts and Bastrop, and I'm just extremely grateful to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving along here to Bastrop High School Robotics. We have Kathy DiMico and Melissa Kopp, our robotics sponsors.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. My name is Kathy DiMico, and I am the very proud Bear Tech's forty-six-ten robotics coach. This is my ride or die, amazing assistant coach, Melissa Kopp, that I could not do this without. So every day, these students amaze me with what they do, their creativity, work ethic, and passion for all things STEM is truly inspiring. Just to give you an idea of what we do every year, the team gets what the, what the game challenge will be every year, the first weekend of January. And after that, they have approximately seven weeks to, I wrote this down because it's so much, understand the game and develop strategy, research and brainstorm, plan, prototype, and CAD the robot, build and program, test, evaluate, iterate, practice, and then iterate more. In seven weeks, talk about stress, deadlines, and hard work. The life skills that these students learn throughout that process cannot be taught in any book. When these kids leave our team, they have the skills that most employers nowadays only dream of, and you guys are supporting all of that, and we truly appreciate you. We have a little something to give to you to show our appreciation. I want to especially thank our mentors, my husband, Giuseppe DiMico, big shout out to him, he is the best husband ever, and he's, he's all things robotics. And I want to thank our principal, Crystal Gabriel, the CTE team, Reyna Ellis, Avery Barrera, and Jordan Walker, we could not do this without you, and our amazing Bear Techs, I'm so, so proud. And I want to also give a little shout out. If you or anyone you know thinks that you could ever be a mentor for an amazing group of students, amazing, right? Talk to us and come to the shop and see what our kids do every day, because I promise you, they are the future, and you'll want to be a part of it when you see it. So send people our way, please. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, if Derek Hidley can make his way up to the podium, he's our automotive technology teacher. We have the Bastrop High School Skills US State Competition, and I believe with us we have Ethan Miller, third place in aviation technology.
So I told you I'd be back, and here I am. So unfortunately, we aren't going to Atlanta, but this is our second consecutive third-place achievement at Corpus Christi. So this was my first time being able to watch it, and between him hand-making hydraulic lines or dismantling propellers and making measurements, it was very impressive to see him compete with some high schools that actually have aviation programs and being able to beat some of the best while we are a little auto shop over here. So he's dragging in more people every day to come and dismantle the six-cylinder aviation engine that we have. So definitely thank you all for allowing us to do what we do, and we'll hopefully see you again for a three-peat.
All right, moving along to Bastrop High School Boys Soccer. We have Greg Wineu, the head boys soccer coach. Welcome.
Really well. Yeah, I usually say Smith, Gregory Smith, but I like your pronunciation better. My name's Greg Wineu, boys soccer coach at Bastrop High School. Here in front of me are some of the representatives of our program. Really proud of these boys, I'm glad they're in front of me right now, so I don't have to, I can look in their eyes. This has been a remarkable season for our program. We went a long time without making the playoffs, and earlier in the year, I challenged the boys to take themselves out of the equation and make it more of a we and us, and I think they did a fabulous job of that. Throughout the year, obviously, we had ups and downs, but we prevailed a lot of the times. We went sixteen, two, and six. They're not very happy about the six ties we had, but you know what? That's all right. We were able to make it into the playoffs and had a really beautiful run. Went to the third round, lost to Lake Creek in the third round. If only we only had those twenty-five seconds back, we'd maybe play a little longer. But really proud of the journey that these boys have done. I really appreciate all the support. I never thought in a million years, a million years, that I would be driving a bus, and in front of me would be a police escort going down Main Street for a, a send-off. And that was really enjoyable, the boys had a great time, and I appreciate all the people that are here videoing me right now that supported that and got that, got that running. These guys have bright futures, and hopefully we'll be back next year and, and maybe with a bigger and better trophy. So thank you for your time and appreciate the invite.
All right, moving along to our spotlight speaker tonight, which is Jennifer Bloom. She's a counselor at Mina Elementary to discuss Toyota Way Forward Pediatric Trauma Related Brain Injury Grant Incentive. And before we turn it over to you, I noticed we have Carlos Liriano, the owner of Lost Pines Toyota, and thank you for bringing this grant to us, to the school and partnering. So I hope I didn't steal part of your thunder.
Oh, no worries, no worries. Hello, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to have the BISD Spotlight today. My name is Jennifer Bloom, and I am the proud school counselor at Mina Elementary. I am here to discuss the effects of pediatric trauma-related brain injury, or TBI, and to inform you about a new initiative between Bastrop ISD, the Toyota Way Forward Foundation, Ascension Catholic Church, and our local Lost Pines Toyota dealership. Pediatric TBI can go unnoticed in the early stages of a child's life, yet the consequences can be far-reaching. Trauma-related brain injury occurs when an external force causes damage to the brain. In children and teens, this might result from falls, accidents, physical abuse, or sports-related injuries. Unlike adults whose brains have reached maturity, children's brains are in a critical stage of development, making them more vulnerable to damage. Their brains are also incredibly plastic and can adapt and rewire in response to positive and negative experiences. When trauma disrupts this delicate process, it can lead to lasting changes in cognition, behavior, and emotional regulation. Depending on the severity and the location of the brain injury, children and teens may struggle with memory, attention, language acquisition, and problem-solving skills. These are the variabilities that form the foundation for learning and educational success. As educators and caregivers, we observe that children with TBIs may face difficulties concentrating in the classroom, following instructions, or processing new information. They may fall behind academically, potentially leading to long-term challenges in school performance and educational attainment. It is crucial that these challenges be recognized early and that appropriate interventions be provided to help children with TBIs thrive academically. Beyond cognitive impacts, trauma-related brain injuries can affect a child's behavior and their emotional well-being. The brain areas responsible for impulse control, emotional regulation, and social interactions may be impaired, leading to frustration, irritability, or difficulty forming relationships with peers and adults. Mental health professionals, educators, and families must work together to provide the emotional and behavioral support that these children need. Early therapy and counseling can help mitigate these effects and ensure that our children and teens develop healthy coping mechanisms as they grow. Socially, children and teens with TBIs may face isolation or stigmatization due to their unique challenges. They may struggle to fit in with peers, and because brain injuries are often invisible, others may misunderstand or lack empathy for their difficulties. The earlier we create supportive environments... The earlier we create supportive environments, the better the chance they have to build positive social relationships and gain confidence in themselves. So, the responsibility falls on all of us, educators, healthcare providers, policymakers, and community members, to address the needs of children and teens suffering from trauma-related brain injuries. So let's take a look at the Toyota Way Forward Grant Initiatives and BISD's plan. So Ascension Catholic Church and BISD Board Trustee Priscilla Ruiz wrote and received a $170,000 Toyota Way Forward Grant on behalf of Lost Pines Toyota. Approximately $80,000 went to Bastrop ISD for the development and education of an awareness campaign. Lost Pines Toyota is one of only three dealerships across the country to receive this funding. Bastrop ISD has created a three-point plan for best how to use these funds to make the most impact on our children and teens. So, Part One, Curriculum. We have already wrote and adopted age-appropriate health lessons for grades K through 12, focusing on recognizing signs of and preventing pediatric TBI. Also, at the high school level, we are purchasing helmets that have specialized software to help trainers assist student athletes who may get injured. The second part would be parent education. So we want to educate our parents at booths, at school, and community events to share information, resources, and connections with health professionals, including Dell Children's of Austin. And also, the last part, Community Awareness. Raising awareness through PSAs produced by BISD Communications, featuring student ambassadors and their families, school medical and athletic staff, Lost Pines Toyota, and the School Health Advisory Council. And so this was our kickoff event that we did earlier this year. It was incredible. Carlos, thank you so much for your generosity and for hosting us. The support that he has given the district and this program is truly, truly inspiring. And this man's generosity is going to change the lives of children in Bastrop County. I cannot thank you enough for your dedication and your passion for this. I am so excited to work with you. I'm honored to work with you. And you're going to do amazing, we're going to do amazing things. You're incredible, sir. So, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, in closing, Bastrop ISD is honored to be partnering with the Toyota Way Forward Foundation to educate our community about pediatric-related brain injury. We are so grateful for the support and partnership of Lost Pines Toyota and Ascension Catholic Church. By increasing awareness and education, we can break the stigma surrounding brain injuries and provide every child the opportunity to succeed regardless of their struggles. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Also want to give a shout out to trustee Larice. Thank you for your time and Ascension, the Catholic Church as well. Carlos, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I would like to thank board member Ruiz for all of her support. Without her, this would not have been possible. Also, without the board's support and the system's support, we would not be able to make this happen. The great work that has been done is being recognized by Toyota. And they want to make this a pilot program to expand to other communities. And this year, we are working on a grant to make this much bigger and involve the doctors and the facilities and all the other things that come together. So I just want to thank you all for your support. We, as a community, as a school system, as businesses coming together, we are putting together this program, and it's going to just change lives for kids. So, thank you very much.
All right, we had no one sign up for open forum, and hats off to the administration and the principals and the teachers and all the fine people at Bastrop ISD for doing such a good job and working hard, so we don't have nobody in here complaining. So, or handling the complaints. How's that? So anyways, thank you all for that and everything you do. So move along to our superintendent's report. We'll move into our financial report. Delinquent tax report with us this evening is Noe Reyes with McCleary, Vasselka, Bragg, and Alan. Reyes, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, and members of the board. Thank you for having me today. We do this on an annual basis where I bring a report on tax revenues, tax collections, delinquent tax collections. Even though there's a lot of information in the report I have given you, we're going to keep this brief. We will go through it thoroughly, though. I think it's important information to have. And of course, if at any point you have any questions about any of this material, please do not hesitate to ask. First of all, let's, just to remind the board and the public of the tax calendar. Tax bills go out roughly in October and November of each year, after values have been set, certified, and a tax rate has been determined. Taxpayers have until the last day of January to pay those taxes without incurring late fees. On February 1st of each year, they, those taxes that have not been paid begin accruing penalties and interest. Those penalties and interest continue to go up each month until July 1st. On July 1st is whatever taxes remain unpaid, they are turned over to my law firm for formal collections. So we're talking eight, nine months after tax bills have gone out, almost a year. So with that in mind, let's jump right into the material. I am on page three of your reports. This is what I call total revenue from tax collections. This is total current, current, current tax year collections plus all delinquent tax year collections plus penalties and interest as a percentage of your annual tax levy during the fiscal year. This is tax collections during the fiscal year as a percentage of your levy. Let's begin with tax year 2023, fiscal year ending 6/30 of '24. The adjusted tax levy was $82,616,816. That's for tax year 2023. I mentioned the July 1st deadline before formal collections begin. Of that, of that $82,616,000, roughly a little bit over 95% of those, of that revenue is paid prior to July 1st. The remaining 4.75% is what is turned over to my law firm. That number can vary between 4% and 6%. And of course, the idea is for as many of the tax accounts to get paid prior to collections. Roughly about $3 million of that $81 million in total current, total current and delinquent tax collections is delinquent collections. So, your adjusted tax levy was $82,616,000. Total current plus delinquent tax year collections, which means 2023 tax year plus all delinquent tax years was $81,698,098. Penalties and interest collected on those delinquent taxes was $1,482,518. Total revenue from tax collections, $83,180,616. The collections percentage is 100.68. Now, why is this figure important? Texas Education Agency requires collections to be at a certain level, and if those collections aren't at a certain level, it could negatively impact your school funding formula each year. Over time, the TEA, I believe, requires 95% and above. Thankfully, we're well over that. We've never really been in danger of not meeting those requirements. Usually, we are over 100%. '22 was 99.07. '21 was 101.17. '2020 was 101.53. So, we really try to keep these 98% and above, but they're usually over 100%. And they certainly average over 100%. Any questions about what this figure represents?
Those expenditures, that interest has to be spent the same as the tax collection money or expenditures?
These are revenues. Part of the general fund revenue, so it really kind of goes into the overall budget. Does that answer your question?
You can spend the money different from what they're collecting in property taxes. Do you have to, you know, what we spend that money on, do we have to spend the taxes, I mean, the interest and penalties the same way?
Or it's all treated the same when it comes down to it?
I agree.
Reading the report, are you saying that $81 million is delinquent?
No, 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 no. No. That $81 million is all tax revenues during the year.
Okay.
Roughly $78 million of that $81 million was what was collected prior to July 1st.
The delinquency?
Yes. Now, $3 million of that, roughly $3 million of that $81 million was delinquent tax collections during the fiscal year.
And you're responsible to collect the delinquent?
That's right. That's right. Yes.
Try to collect it, but also foreclose and sell the property.
In some cases, yes. Yes. And I'll go over that just a little bit, so, as well. Basically, 96, 95, 96% of the tax accounts are paid on time. The rest is handed to my firm for collections, and we collect quite a bit of that during the first year. So, we'll go over that. If you go to page two with me, I'm sorry, page four, which is on slide number two. This is a little bit easier to understand, I think. Cumulative tax collections, this is what is collected of each levy over time, okay? So, let's look at tax year 2023. The adjusted tax levy was $82,616,000, the same figure as we saw in the last slide. What remains unpaid as of March 1st, 2025, of that $82 million, $82.6 million, is $1,849.82. So as of March 31st, 2025, the cumulative percent collected was 97.76, which is pretty high. And over time, as we collect for a longer period of time, that number gets really close to 100%. Now, this is just each tax year tax levy. So, as you can see, over time, it gets right up to 100%, close to 100%. So for 2020, the tax levy was $61,421,000. All that remains unpaid is $170,642 of 2020 taxes. We've collected $61,251,000, or a percentage of 99.72. Also, very, very high collections percentages there.
So how, that 170, the timeframe, we just don't get that, or was the property sold on the courthouse steps?
The 170, the 170,000 that remains unpaid for 2020 could be a number of things. And I'll talk about that in just, a little bit more in just a second. But we, you know about tax deferrals, right? That includes tax deferrals. It includes property that is in a delinquent tax lawsuit, where we are formally collecting through the judicial process those $170,000. And most of the, what's, what remains after two or three years that is uncollected will be either tax deferrals or some complex property. There are some properties in which we file a lawsuit, for example, that there are 100 heirs, a number of, a number of ownership issues, sometimes more. There's been properties here in Bastrop, there are 200 heirs. Our law firm has to communicate with each one of those. There's a legal process to serve each heir. And if we don't serve each heir or address, provide an opportunity as, per the rules, per statutes, per the rules of procedure, that, if it goes to a tax sale, it can be held invalid later down the road. So, we want to make sure that, and those can take time. Some cases can take two, three, or four years to fully adjudicate. So, I will, I will talk a little bit more about this, and I'll break it down as to what remains unpaid overall and what we're doing about it. Any other questions about cumulative tax collections? Let's go to page five on your reports, and we're only going to look at two more charts, and then we'll be done. I mentioned that for tax year 2023, the tax levy was $82,616,000. You remember that, right? What went delinquent, what was unpaid on July 1st for that tax year was $3.926 million, okay? As of March 31st, 2025, we've collected $2 million of that $3.9 million, right? There's $1,849 million remaining. So, in nine months of collection activity, July 1st through March 25th, we've collected 52%, 52.91% of what went delinquent for 2023. I shoot for 50 to 60% to be paid in the first 12 months. That's my goal, so that we can keep collections up. So here, we usually meet it in anywhere between seven and nine months, that 50 to 60%. So, and again, the reason, the reason that it takes a few months is because we have to send out letters. We have to, in some cases, file lawsuits. There's a legal procedure we have to follow to, to collect these unpaid taxes. 2022, the original July 1st delinquency was $4 million. After 21 months of collections, we've, we've collected 76.72%. This is payment plans. This is delinquent tax lawsuits. Again, there's a procedure that's in place to get these collected. 2020, we're going back all the way to 2020 again, 1.923 went delinquent that year. That was what was unpaid on July 1st. As in 45 months of collection, we've collected 91.13%. Also, very, very good figures, collections-wise. Any questions about this? This is delinquent tax collections only.
No, I'm sorry. I just have one question. Of the tax remaining, the 1.849, what is your anticipation for having a little more of that collected by that 12-month period that you talked about?
I think in the 12 months, we'll probably collect, probably another million within, within 12 months. Yeah. It'll be about 75% altogether. This gets collected pretty fast, relatively speaking, given, given legal requirements to collect them. Any other questions about this? One last chart. The total outstanding balance for, I'm on page nine in your reports. The total outstanding balance of all taxes that remain unpaid for Bastrop ISD is $4,357,000, okay? Now, what does this number mean? This, this outstanding amount goes back as far as 20 years, in some cases, more. Why? Because there exists something called tax deferrals. Tax deferrals are, are a postponement of taxes on residence homesteads for individuals that are over 65 or meet certain disability requirements. If an individual is over 65 or meets certain disability requirements, that individual can apply for a deferral of taxes, deferral of the payment of taxes on their residence homestead. Some of these go back 25 years, 20 years. So, that number, 4 million, .3 million is a big number, right? It's a lot for anybody here. Let's keep this number in perspective. This is everything that is unpaid for the last 20 to 25 years of taxes, okay, of tax levies. That amount is close to $1 billion over 20 years. So this amount represents four tenths of a, of one percentage point that is, is still being collected, okay? Now, let's break this number down a little bit further. Look at the teal portion of your pie chart. I mentioned tax deferrals, right? 963,000 of this 4.357 million, roughly 22 million, 22% is in tax deferrals, what I was talking about. This 963,000 is something that, by This nine hundred and sixty-three thousand is something that, um, by state statute, our law firm is unable to, uh, undertake collections on, any kind of collections, um, because it's forbidden. Um, so, right off the bat, roughly, almost a quarter of that four point three million is something that we cannot touch. Um, does that make sense? Is that, is there a question about that? Now, I said, I've mentioned that, um, we file delinquent tax lawsuits, um, for foreclosure on what remains unpaid. Almost thirty-two percent of that four point three five seven million is in a delinquent tax lawsuit. So, as you can see, uh, we are, we are actively working on, on, uh, thirty-two percent of that, um, four point three five seven million. You have to go through the legal process on this, and this is what I mentioned with, with there being, uh, properties with a number of heirs, um, things like that. Um, a lot of these folks are also in a payment plan. Once we take it into a delinquent tax lawsuit, a lot of folks enter into payment plans that are in a lawsuit. Now, we also have about another quarter of that four point three five seven million, that's nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, twenty-two point one eight, to be exact, are formal payment plans that, uh, are required, uh, by law. So, uh, a quarters in, roughly a quarters in tax deferrals and other quarters in payment plan, about thirty-two percent is in the lawsuit and judgment, very little remains that is not in one of these categories. Uh, twenty twenty-three taxes, uh, research and progress, uh, five hundred and twenty-one thousand. Keep in mind that, uh, these taxes, these, these, uh, unpaid balance for twenty twenty-three was only handed over to my firm in July of twenty-four. So, we've, this is what we've been working for the last nine months. Um, and eventually, all of this will be, uh, either in a payout or a delinquent tax lawsuit. So, i- it's, it's all being worked. Uh, and, and the important thing to keep in mind is, uh, that this is a very small percentage of everything that's been levied over the past twenty to twenty-five years. Uh, if you count twenty years, we're talking, I think, if I looked up correctly, around nine hundred and eighty million dollars in tax levy for twenty years. So, um, we're, we're actively working all the time, every day, uh, to, to collect the remaining amount of taxes. I have a staff of five individuals here in Bastrop, uh, in our office in Bastrop, that work on this every day. So, um, and that's all I have. Any questions about this material?
I've got a couple.
Yes.
The numbers that we have in this, in the book that you presented, is it net of your fee? Or how is, what, what is yours a percentage of the collection?
This is all independent of, uh, of what my firm charges. Um, there is no line, the school district doesn't pay us, my firm, anything, nor does the county, nor, uh, out of its budget, right? So, if there is, if there is...
And it's from what is collected?
Yes, yes. So, let's, um, let's say that there's a delinquent tax for a thousand dollars, right? Which is what I, what we're talking about here. Uh, the, the law, um, adds on July first, an additional fifteen percent contingent fee. So, the delinquent taxpayer, uh, the bill goes from a thousand dollars to one thousand, one hundred and fifty. And once that gets collected, the school district receives its full one thousand dollars, and then our firm is paid a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, so you'll get a percentage of that.
Yes.
Got another one, and I don't know if you or, or Mr. White can answer this, but in our package, we also get from Ellen Owens, the tax assessor, and there's a collection report there. I'm not, I mean, should the numbers jive, or are we off because of timing differences?
I'm familiar with that report.
Okay.
Um, and they're, they're a little bit different.
I mean, they're not, yeah, they're not exact, they're not way off, but I kind of...
Those are, those are, uh, monthly reports. Um, this is based on, on all of those.
Okay.
So, so basically, uh, twelve months' worth of those reports. We, we get these numbers directly from, uh, the place she gets those monthly numbers. So, they're, they're, they're a little bit different, but a, a lot of the information, you'll find the same if you look at it over time, but, um, they're very, very similar.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other question? Thank you.
Thanks for coming out this evening.
Yep, we'll see you all next time.
All right. Moving along to, uh, budget update number three, uh, Mike White, our, uh, chief finance officer. Mike, tell us something exciting. Where's your crystal ball?
I will try, sir.
I'm sorry, that one? Okay. So, one of the things, while we're waiting, um, you'll find the four point three five million dollar outstanding receivable that Noe referred to on, near the bottom of that page. His reports are just much more detailed, broken out. She doesn't really care about tax year and all, some of those other breakdowns, so. Okay, as we were. So, I appreciate, uh, your time tonight. I'm coming back to you for our third, uh, budget update discussion. So, we are in April now, I'd probably, I would say I'm, uh, approaching the home stretch here in May and June. Um, have some updates. I wish, uh, as you guys can read in the newspaper, I wish there were more updates. Keep right there on the verge of, uh, some, uh, breaking news, hopefully, but as of going to press, here's where we're at. Um, we talked about the, the approach and everything going on in the House, um, which they did refer to as the Texas Two Step, which I thought was, uh, a, a little funny. Um, it's moving forward at this point. Um, the, the exciting thing is that the language in the, the House's bills, uh, two and three, um, particularly House Bill Two, are, are looking well. Um, we had the basic allotment adjustment. They had previously had a version in there that had that going up to sixty-three eighty. We're excited to say that they were able to, um, do some maneuvering and calculations there. Prob- probably part of the reason for the delay, to get that up to sixty-five fifty, uh, which is a, you know, a hair under four hundred dollars, uh, on the basic allotment, which is, which is great. That's, that's an increase we haven't seen in some time. Um, it does come with a stipulation we talked about, uh, in prior months, that it moves that from a thirty percent requirement to forty. Um, and of that, of that amount, basically, the delta of year-over-year funding, um, seventy-five percent being on teachers, nurses, counselors, librarians. Um, we were hoping, of course, advocating for, as, uh, in public ed, for, uh, a true adjustment to what costs have done since two thousand and nineteen. And again, for reference, that is about thirteen hundred dollars. Um, they continue to include, um, expansions of their tech, teacher incentive allotment program. You guys will have been receiving updates on that, and, and will tonight, um, continue to discuss what that looks like for us as we enter in, you know, start to go down that road and, and, um, participate in that program. Sorry, this is acting a little weird. Oh, so, here we are this week, um, when I spoke to, um, a state rep last week, um, given the information that Wednesday was going to be a big day. And so, um, we should have, um, HB two and three kind of go back-to-back. They're going to approve, uh, the finance bill first and the ESA bill second. Um, at this point, um, all, you know, all but sure to pass the House. And then, um, if this delay is, is indicative of, of negotiations that have been going on, hopefully, uh, go through the Senate as well. The real kicker is, I was hoping we would have a, a good run. A run is basically a financial model, right? Uh, where the rubber meets the road, to talk about what this means. Um, both for the state budget, you know, they're basically quantifying what, what, uh, House Bill Two and Three would do. That was supposed to come out Saturday, and then I heard Monday, and I was waiting, you know, all day today, and, uh, and eventually had to move forward. Hopefully tomorrow, um, I would think it would come out, but really just have, uh, guesses at this point, and I hate, I hate to show, to, to share guesses. One of the things that looks to be clear, um, at this point, is that the language in House Bill Three is gonna, gonna carry the day. So, I'll put a little check mark here. We had two different scenarios for the ESAs, um, and the, and the one that uses an eighty-five percent of, of state funding appears to be the language it's going to be substituted in, um, with that thirty thousand dollars, um, special education, uh, cap. So, interesting to see, um, that finalize and see what that looks like, um, as we move forward. So, property values, um, he talked a little bit about the timeline each year. As, as a district, we get our preliminary values here in about ten days or so, um, which kind of gives us an idea of what, um, what that looks like, um, with most of those implications really coming for the debt service side, right, as we go to set that, um, tax rate, which has been about forty cents every year. So, um, we get indications, um, around the county and around, uh, the Austin area, really statewide, that value growth is really slowing down a little bit compared to what it was, um, last couple of years, uh, post-COVID. So, that's an important milestone. Um, don't have a whole lot about the debt service side, and that will be one of the first pieces of data to work with there. So, the budget process, talked a little bit about some of these same, same things last, um, update, but I just want to reiterate because, um, we, you know, we have a, a little bit of an overview here tonight about some of these things. Teacher FTEs for growth, um, we're gonna have a demographer, demographic presentation, uh, here in a little bit, and to talk about some of that growth, so we're having to account for that. Of course, we have Adelton open, opening in August, uh, and the conversion of two intermediates to middle schools. Um, priorities continue to be staff and teacher pay raises, um, uh, support needs that kind of go along with that growth, something you can't, you know, forget of, forget about. We talked about MTSS a little bit, um, have an update on that. And then, of course, um, the needs of special, special education across the state and in our district, um, in particular, uh, continue to grow. So, here's where we're at, and I want to, I want to give a big caveat here, um, really in the next few slides, the, really, the whole presentation. We had to start, you know, presenting a, you know, a scenario, and, um, I would love to have an informed scenario based on what's going to happen this week. Unfortunately, the timing of the board meeting and where we're at, I had to kind of give you a scenario, worst-case scenario of, of status quo. If we don't get additional funding, here's what it would look like, right? In May, I hope to come back and have a real scenario, which is going to be our proposed, uh, budget draft that we can work through, and then for, for June adoption. So, um, that, that big caveat, this doesn't have any additional dollars from the state, which at this point is very conservative. Um, we currently have no pay raises as a result of no funding. Uh, we have to open Adelton, and the cost there, the transition of the intermediates, growth positions. Um, I did highlight, break down a little bit, um, that it does include adding, uh, back forty, four MTSS coaches in that number, and then, of course, special education needs, um, of various types across the district. So, these were the, really, the pillars of the budget, um, work that we've been doing internally. And to give you an idea what that looks like, um, it's about a hundred and thirty-nine point seven million dollars revenues, revenues and expenditures. Of course, next month, when we come back, we will have, um, knock on wood, we will have, uh, additional funding that, with that increase in the basic allotment and all the other things that are happening, um, will be higher on both sides, because as we get additional revenue, then we can look to take care of, of some of the things that didn't make the cut, uh, including take care of staff, okay? So, I wish it were more substantive, uh, substantial update, um, at this point, but unfortunately not. Here we are in the timeline, April, um, really the third presentation, but the first official, uh, budget look. Um, continuing to have internal conversations every day about things that come up, um, and, uh, really kind of waiting to see what we have to work with, and then, uh, really roll up our sleeves. So, here's where we're at, what to watch for moving forward. Um, it, it, it appears that we have, uh, been delayed despite both the House and Senate being in agreement, all, going all the way back to January, right? So, they're saying all the right things, and they, they seem to be on the same page, but here we are, um, you know, two, two and a half months later, uh, without action. So, hopefully, that is indicative of, of negotiations that have been going on, and that, once we have Wednesday's board, uh, House action, that, um, we have smooth sailing from that point forward. You know, I would like to see, uh, the current mechanisms, we talk a lot about, we, we presented tonight it from the House side, sail through, um, at a minimum, that would be great. Um, it doesn't address all our needs, but, um, it's, it's definitely a move in the right direction. And of course, until this thing is all the way to the governor's desk and signed and put into action, anything can happen. So, um, who's to say what, what will? So, I want to make sure that you guys are always, uh, aware of that. Items? Yes, sir.
With that increase in allotment, that's, that'd be roughly north of five million.
Yes, sir.
If we could get that.
Yes, assuming, one of the things that's interesting, uh, and they've tentatively added it back in, is with a lot of districts that get hold harmless money from various adjustments. The homestead exemptions is one, um, other things. And so, yes, everything else held equal, um, and we don't lose anything, that we don't lose fast growth, fast growth money, or anything we're held harmless, um, then yes, it would be, it would be in that territory maybe even better. I mean, it's hard to say, but, um, you know, that really helps. That goes a long way when it take, when you talk about, um, taking care of staff, so. We did all the work we could do up until that point, so, um, here's two items that, um, well, really, three items that we're watching closely. TRS has come out and, and, and announced that they pushed the announcement of medical rates, uh, to early June. I think, June second or third. Part of the reason they're doing that is they have some legislation to, to help offset some of the costs. Basically, the state's been subsidizing medical insurance for, for public ed, uh, going back a few years. And so, rather than, uh, put out higher rates, they're trying to, um, hold off and kind of, like we are, wait till they have all the information and see where things settle out, uh, before they make their announcement. So, that's always, um, you know, depending on the burden, uh, to our staff, on rising medical, that's always a consideration. Um, and then property casualty rates, you know, uh, with all the, well, a- as you know, sir, in the insurance industry, it's been a wild couple of years with the, going back to the ice storms and hurricanes and locusts, whatever they have. All the calamities. Um, you know, we saw a big increase last year. Now, we're growing, so, of course, the base that we're covering is, is continuing to expand, but it was, it went from, um, you know, like five to eight hundred thousand, I want to say, which is, for the amount of property we have, is, is, is competitive, but a big increase. So, I don't have that, those rates for next year, we'll deal with them when they come. I don't think we'll see sixty percent year-over-year. I think they've kind of adjusted after all those losses they took, um, industry-wide. So, um, that's something I hope to have an update for in May. And then student growth, I mean, you know, as Rocky Gardner can tell you, um, it's all, you know, until the kids show up, it's all, it's all an educated guess, you know? So, that's a critical number in all the formulas I use. So, the kids that show up are how we get funded. So, here's a key milestones. We talked about entering the, the, the home stretch. We get into May, we're really, we're really there. I'm coming back to you, May thirteenth, with, um, proposed budget. We published in early June for a, a June seventeenth adoption. Of course, we have this legal deadline of, of June thirtieth there. Um, we get certified values July twenty-fifth, so that's a, a key milestone. That kind of goes into the, the compression, uh, calculation that TEA does. That's basically our MNO tax rate. We have to wait till that point to kind of really figure out, um, is it going to compress, um, what that band looks like? And so, that will be a, an update to be provided later. And then, of course, um, we propose a tax rate, and then we come back in September and adopt it. So, very similar to last year, but I want to always keep you, you know, um, in the know in terms of, of the steps we have out in front of us. That's really what I have to present tonight, so, uh, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
On the, maybe too late this year, but on the medical insurance, and I do no business with the school, it's a conflict interest, and I can't, but I know that there's some alternatives out there, it'd be going away from what we have now.
Yeah.
But we have counties, cities that are going that direction. And so, I think it's time to, to look at that, to just know what's out there, because I have, we can't, no school district or can keep sustaining these types of increases medically.
Sure.
I mean, it just keeps going up and up and up, and it's not changing the deductible or max out-of-pocket, it's not what's moving the needle. There's some other proactive things, so just, you know, I can lead you in some good direction there.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Just similar to that, what, um, the president just described, so, I don't know, I mean, I agree. Um, ultimately, if we're looking at things that can, you know, just improve over time. The other question I had for you was just a forecast of what you might have or might think, and I know this might be a better question for our, um, anybody who's doing maintenance and operations. Are we getting to a place where our buildings are, you know, better, in better shape than they were? And do we, do we forecast, you know, maybe getting a breather from, from just maintenance operations, just keeping the buildings? Or is that just going to continue?
Well, I wish I had good news for you there. Uh, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but, you know, as we grow, um, of course, that period of time where we didn't have, you know, new schools being built, because typically, as you build, you know, kind of a regular basis, you have older and newer schools. I think we had a period of time where everything kind of got a little older, so HVAC units, you know, boilers, chillers, all those kind of things that kind of age and, and roofs. I think we had a period of time where everything kind of got a little older. So HVAC units, you know, boilers, chillers, all those kind of things that kind of age and, and roofs. It'll definitely help with some of the, the newer square footage we have, new schools, new, um, newer roofs. Those kind of things kind of get you a blended average of facilities down a little bit. But I think it's something we're going to be playing a little bit of catch up for a while. Of course, maybe in future bond issues, if we have the capacity to look at some of those things. I know we've done, done a lot in this twenty-one and twenty-three series, um, to handle a lot of those needs. But I don't want to, you know, I don't want to misrepresent. The problem is in the general operating, can't carry too much of a burden on that just because it's the same thing that pays all the other bills. So we, we do a regular maintenance items and, and some, some of those kind of things, but for instance, it's hard to pull off a roof, you know, those kind of things. So, um, we have to just be strategic with it. Um, and, uh, you know, it's triage, you know, like with every district I've been at, it's, I, I don't also to have a, you asked, you know, how does it compare? Are we catch, I, I don't have that frame of reference. I'll have to defer, to, to somebody that has a little bit more history, um, on that.
Edwards, we profiled every campus in regards to age of the roof and the, the life, shelf life on that roof, on those AC units. Of course, things could, could happen. So we kind of have an idea of, you know, just keep our fingers crossed, kind of like the one in your home. If it's twelve years old, it's maybe a matter of time. So.
But I will say, Ms. Ruiz, that with the bond, as you know, you were a big part of helping us get that passed, every single building has been touched. And I'm, I know you're out there a lot, so you see them, you know, freshened up. Um, we've done an extensive AC planning, replacement. Our, our big thing is the preventative maintenance and getting up with that. But as far as improvements, I don't think the schools, there's no comparison to what they looked like just five years ago. I, I can assure you of that with, with the touchups and the, the mechanical stuff that we've been able to do. But he's right. When you, when it comes to a roof, you know, we're still in that patching stage where we'd prefer to go in and just do the whole roof like we did in Emile, for example. So, yeah.
Could take a little while.
Back there that, that is taking care of that for us.
He may come up and correct everything I just said, so I apologize. Trust him, not me, I assure you.
He might have just raised his bar, you know.
It's all right. I'll try. Um, good question. I appreciate that.
Any other?
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you. Could you mention, because that was one of the items that I was going to bring up is that MTSS. Hopefully you were saying that we were hoping to get four. Can we get more? Can you at least try to?
Yeah.
Deal for at least two for each elementary campus. I mean.
I think the, the plan was to, once we had a handle on our funding here, hopefully any day, hopefully tomorrow, but, um, in coming weeks, to, to circle back to all the kind of things that didn't make the no new revenue budget, you know? It was just very difficult to get there because you saw the first big item, you know, the required items were multimillion dollar items. So, um, it was definitely, it's progress, but I'll defer to.
The four is if we get no money.
Right.
And then we would of course up that.
Okay. So we're gonna at least get, so am I hearing correctly, in the budget we'll have at least four? And that'll be shared among which campuses? Or they'll be, you know, getting a Corvette to zoom everywhere?
I think the methodology was.
No, the, the kind of work that it takes for MTSS, they need to be there. What, what our plan, initial plan was is some of our elementary schools will still have two assistant principals. And some will have one. Every school that has only one assistant principal will get an MTSS to support. That's if we get no money.
Okay. So we're putting, I mean.
That's based on enrollment and caseload.
Right.
And so it makes sense to do it that way.
Okay. So even, so unfortunately with the MTSS, if they have the two APs, that burden is placed on them to do that MTSS coach.
Work with that, yes.
Okay. To, to work on that then. Um, when it comes to the budget, what, how do you, how do you come, and I think we talked about this last month, but is, do you, on each campus, how, how is it determined that each campus gets money? You get a, similar to a block grant?
Yeah, no, that's a good question.
Thousand or?
Yeah, so, um, my predecessor had started something that I kind of took and, um, and it took the next evolution. Really moving towards an allotment per student is really the most equitable. Um, we had done that. I know if, at least for last year, I didn't go back to, to several years ago, um, that based on the student numbers that we project, I mean, that can be adjusted later. Depending on what level you're at, um, we give a, basically a budget worksheet and we give, I think I was meeting with the principal earlier today. I want to say it was sixty thousand dollars for these, I don't know, fifteen or twenty line items. That mostly supplies, travel, those kind of discretionary kind of things that they get to allocate, um, across those departments. And so, um, they go through that. I gave a couple of years of history. I gave everything related to this year as well as, um, the ability to kind of play with those numbers in, in, in my, uh, in my, uh, tool, my, my spreadsheet. So, um, I've received almost every one of them back, um, working with a few others on some specific questions, um, from the, from the principals. And then of course, um, you know, letting them know two important principles, there were no cuts. Last year we were in, if you recall, about twelve months ago, it was cuts across the board in, in every way and everything. Right now, said, don't plan to cut these, you know, down five or ten percent, um, depending on whatever happens with funding. And so far we're holding true to that and, um, and giving them the discretion to, uh, to allocate those funds the way they, the way they'd like and, um, you know, um, that's, that's worked pretty well so far.
You said they're based on enrollment. I mean, do they? If, you know, depending on enrollment, that's okay, but what happens if they have more students that are needing more assistance, more needs? You know, special needs students, uh, you got immersion bilingual, the different programs.
Yeah.
They're, they're weighted a little bit more, I think, on funding wise. So, and they require a little bit more. So how does that play in the, into?
Sure.
Giving of the, to the each campus.
Yeah, I've addressed that concern with a couple of principles. Um, what I did, the, I, I thought the most equitable way to do that, um, at my last district was to take that allotment essentially, those, those same dollars and divide, um, it into a, a base per student and then using comp ed numbers. Which really captures that in the, in the greatest way. Um, those two kind of being a hy- it's kind of a hybrid approach. Those two numbers kind of being, um, it takes in your, both your overall student numbers as well as demographics, um, socioeconomics, those kind of things. So that is the, uh, most equitable way to do it. Um, I kind of had to walk before I could run, you know, that kind of approach. So I, I called it an evolution because I, I've told them, um, it's not all the way there. The, I simplified what, what I inherited. And then next year we would look at figuring out a way to equitably do that differently. I think that's a fair request.
Just, I think, a couple more, and I probably want to meet with you later because I'm not going to get down into it. Cause I did look at, uh, the different codes, the finance codes, eleven twenty-three, and I'm not going to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. I kind of thought it was exciting. Um, but, and I, and I think sometimes in your budget, we're, we're able to transfer some funds. And I'm not within function or whatever it may be.
Yeah, yeah, cross functions.
So some of these codes, we could, I mean, a, a teacher or staff could be paid from a couple of these different codes.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that is that, is that at your level or is that at the campus, campus level?
No, that's at the finance level based on what we do. Of course, I would work with, you know, the academics out of the house, figure out, you just really want to match, you know, what are they doing? What kind of staff member it is, what kind of kids they're working with. Um, and then of course, TEA gives guidance on coding. So we try to adhere to all those kind of things. And we have programmatic requirements. So we get all this big pot of money. And then there's some, you know, it's little smaller pots for comp ed, ESL, special ed. And there's requirements that kind of go with, along with those state allotments. And so we track that. Um, and of course, we've been meeting those, those requirements. But yes, coding and sometimes, you know, folks, um, you know, uh, you, you know, when you got fifteen hundred different people coded and sometimes cross functions. You know, you kind of go back and you're reviewing that and you might grant, there's grant funded people and, you know, so, uh, there's a lot of things that go into the mix there. But, um, but yes, it's, you got folks, almost in every one of those functions is, is got some payroll in it. So.
And I think one last one is, yeah, what I'd like to do is perhaps, because I know the budget we usually get is a fairly high level budget. Is there any possible way that I could kind of dig down into it and get it more familiar with it? I know that's probably beyond this role, but I really am interested in the allocation of the staffs, uh, the administration and such as that. So I'd like to dive in, um, if possible. Maybe I can set, set an appointment with you.
It'll be allocated by dollars. Uh, the P E M's reports may be a, a better, there's some staff reports that, that Chris, um, might be able to provide. Or maybe, you know, they're, at a certain point, they're available on TEA's website, but we can get you a, a better breakdown on, on those kind of things. My budget reports will only do that on a dollar ba- basis. It may not be as valuable for you, but happy to help. Yeah.
Yeah. I like to, that way I can get a little better handle on it.
Okay.
On that. All right. Thank you. I, I promise I won't take it over.
What's that?
I, I, I promise I won't take it over.
Okay.
No.
Well, that's good. My wife appreciates that.
Other questions for Mr. White? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Uh, moving along to our facilities and operation department report, uh, spring twenty twenty-five demographic report. We got, uh, Rocky, uh, Gardner here with, uh, Zona Education. Welcome back again. Sounds like we're keeping you busy.
But not just in Bastrop. I, I love coming to Bastrop. So it's, it's been fun. It's a pleasure to be back. And, uh, yeah, this will wrap up our year pretty much until, until something comes up and Christie calls me next month. But for now. So this is our research based on the fourth quarter. We base it starting with the fourth quarter data because that, that's the, the last quarter that was reviewed. And, and we looked at, but then our research analyst reaches out to the city, to developers, to county people. So she kind of can make sure to validate some of our own, our, our own work. So I'll work through this. Um, unemployment rates in, in the Austin area remain below or at four percent, and that's really considered full employment. This chart's looked the same for a long time and every year I think I'm going to pull it out just because I feel like I say the same thing every time. Now there's some interesting headwinds in front of us that with some stuff going on. So we're, we're probably going to keep it until next fall and see if there's anything, if we see a little movement in it. And I think that there's a possibility of that. Housing in Austin has definitely slowed a little bit, that nationally, we're still sixth in the country. Up two percent year over year, but you can see from five years ago, we're down about fourteen percent. So it has been some slowdown in some areas of Austin, not necessarily in Bastrop, which you'll see here, here in a minute, but we're definitely seeing some drop off. The challenge that we're seeing is enrollment change. You know, that's what the state's seeing right now. It's all enrollment growth, even though we're, we're, we're the fastest growing area in the, in the country. This year, we just got this data a couple of weeks ago, we only added thirteen thousand students. Last year was about the same. So pre-COVID, we were adding about fifty thousand students a year statewide. They haven't come back. There's a lot of students just haven't come back. You know, charter schools added eighteen thousand students last year and thirteen thousand this year. That's included in those numbers. Cause charter is part of TEA. So what that meant last year is that we really, uh, regular brick and mortar ISDs, and not, not even brick and mortar, it also includes virtual, declined about six thousand la- last year. This year we were probably about, you know, we just didn't grow. So that's keeping that in mind as, as we move, move forward and we see some lowers, you know, sometimes we're seeing some lower yields in our housing. Not always because the students aren't there. Sometimes it's a choice. But in the last five, five years, Bastrop added nineteen hundred students. So we saw positive enrollment change in Bastrop. You can see the green colors here. The region itself grew by about eighty-five hundred. But Bastrop, you can see was almost twenty percent of the region's growth. So we're seeing some strong growth around the region. We're also seeing some really drops in, in the Austins, the round rocks of Flug- Flugerville's areas that were traditionally, vast growth areas aren't growing the way they, they used to. In, in the Austin area, we, you know, your, your starts have now begun to drop off a little bit. We're down to sixteen thousand eight hundred starts. While they're trying to work off those closings. There's a lot of inventory out there. They're working off. There's, you know, they're having to deal with a little bit of price point challenges over in the Austin. You know, you know, on, on the west side o- over there. So twenty thousand closings, that's a, a big number of closings. That's going to begin to drop off just because if they're not starting that many homes, they can't, they can't sell that many homes. So it's, it's where we probably will see a shift during twenty-five. In Bastrop, we have seen a slowdown in overall turnover in housing. What we pulled here are deed transactions. So this is just for your school district, any home that turned over, existing or new home. If it turned over, we've, we got that sale from that, or we've tracked that sale. And so this is based on sale price. We have seen that drop off. I think a lot of that's just been those interest rates. And I think that some people are finally, there's a little bit of a churning going on. I think where people are kind of realizing it's not going to get better. We've just got to figure out a way to get in a home. I know I've experienced that as a parent. I guess the way to get in a home is a- ask your parents. That seems to be a trend. I've seen with two, 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 both my children are closing on homes in the next two weeks. So I guess I am too. So new home prices have continued to increase. We're looking at four hundred and thirty thousand for, for a new home now in Bastrop. You can see back in twenty fourteen, that, that was just two hundred thousand. Your existing home inventory is also sitting at four hundred thousand. So that, those are based on average sale prices. So obviously you have some that are much higher and some that are much lower. But that's based on those deed transactions. And they take a little bit to come in. If you remember the last time you bought a house, it takes a little bit before it actually shows up on, on, on the appraisal rolls. But we're tracking eight hundred and twenty-five new home closings in Bastrop this past year. Strong closing, we have strong closings. Starts have begun to slow a little, little bit in Bastrop. Now we've, now we've seen some upticks. I, I think we, we're going to show you the next slide. And that we're probably going to go up and we may hit seven or eight hundred again. But keep in mind that we, we work from a fourth quarter through a third quarter. So the fourth quarter of last year through the first three quarters of twenty twenty-five is what brings your growth for next year's TEA snapshot number. You've got almost five thousand vacant developed lots. That's what VDL stands for. Inventory of three hundred and forty homes. Okay. I'm going to go to this next slide. And we have over twenty-one thousand futures. So it's not going to, if, if it slows, it's not going to be for long, right? We're, we're going to see some strong housing. This breaks that data by attendance zone. Now what you see here, we, the data, because it was in the fourth quarter, does not include the Adelton zone, but our projections do. The, the inventory number there, that three forty, that includes those homes that are under construction, that two hundred and seven. The difference between that two hundred and seven and that three forty, that, that's about, about a hundred and thirty-three homes. Those are homes at the end of the fourth quarter that were finished but vacant. So there's a good chance that over a hundred homes have closed just since we've, just since the, the end of the fourth quarter. So I think we'll, we'll still see a pretty strong first quarter. And then of course, as you get into summer, things should pick up a little bit as well. Okay. So this is where your activity is. This hasn't changed a lot, the activity where we're, where things are churning. You got thirty-one actively building subdivisions, eighteen futures, and you've got groundwork underway. So you, I talked about almost forty, almost five thousand vacant developed lots. We have another, another almost fifteen hundred that developers are working on right now. Those red outlines that, that you see on that screen, that's where they're moving dirt to take them from futures to VDL. Which again, that's going to put you well over five thousand. Of course, we'll, we'll be working some of those down. But five hundred lots were delivered, were delivered in the fourth quarter. I've got a couple of quick slides here just to give, give you some screenshots. Some of these arrows are fairly recent from March. Um, fifty homes were u- under construction, you know, in, in the colony that, the yield there in the colony is sitting right now at about point two six. As that builds out, that's probably going to begin to increase. They usually start out kind of small because they're getting some students in there. You probably have some young ones i- in there. That price point on some of that's not, not terrible, but you know, so you, you are going to see some students there. We've definitely, definitely done some work around, around the colony. This is Valverde, again, fourteen hundred total lots. They've got a lot of groundwork un- underway. D R Horton, once, once they start, they go pretty fast. So D R Horton will build homes. You can see that, that the newest arrow we had there was for January. We also have a couple of apartments or some duplex units that are being built there. I think you'll see a pretty decent yield. We don't always still real, see real high yields at, at these apartments. But I think when a development gets started, a lot of times the family will move in an apartment or a duplex until their home is done. And so you might see that transition. Adelton, Adelton's a big, a big development. Again, fifteen hundred total lots, just eight homes under construction. David Weekly and Empire Homes building, building a nice product. Just eight students there, but keep in mind that was, we tracked that student data from, from the beginning of the school year. So that yield looks pretty low and that'll start coming in a little higher as well. And we got some futures here, Camp Swift Estates, hundred fifty-four lots. They got that initial roadwork un- underway in March. You can see that. And then we also got Silverleaf with some in- initial work, first homes in the fall of twenty twenty-five. So we won't see a lot of students from either one, one of these in twenty-five, twenty-six, but certainly by twenty-six, twenty-seven, you'll see some strong growth there. And Della Oasis, again, a little bit of roadwork going on there. These are half acre sites. I don't think we'll see a strong yield from this development. Just there's only a hundred lots, but it, it is good to, to see the dirt moving. And the Stoic, Stoic Falcon subdivision, thanks. Hundred sixteen future lots. You can see the initial groundwork underway. Looks like it could be a lot more than a hundred sixteen. We're going to see what happens there, or there're going to be some pretty big lots. And Los Miyagros, seven hundred fifty-three manufactured homes. Now this could move pretty quick because there's sixteen under construction. Home bu- building going on in phases and it's yielding point five five now. I expect this. I expect this yield to actually get up there too. You could probably yield point six, a point seven when this one's done. So this could be a, a product that we see a lot of, and I know we have a lot of students down there already. That, that definitely going to continue to grow. Yes, yes, sir. Multifamily market in Austin has been declining from an occupancy rate perspective for about three years now. We're down to eighty-three percent. I mean, they need to be close to ninety or over ninety for really success in some, in some of the new building. But really, this is not impacting Bastrop. This is a, a metro area number and they've absorbed over ten thousand units. So you know, when your base gets that much bigger, it starts, you know, cannibalizing off some other areas. And, and that's why these occupancy rates are low. And I think that you're, what you're going to see, you've got, you're already seeing concessions, but you're going to see a real slowdown in apartment growth. I think begin to happen in, in Austin proper. But these, these are the two that we're look, we're looking at the two hundred and fifty multi-family units, eighty-two duplexes. Now we do have two thousand futures that are multi, you know, in stages. I think we have a slide you might go see a little better. And I guess we don't have a slide. Well, we do, we do have some big futures. You see that they're kind of that light bluish color. Never know what to call that. Turquoise? Anyway, two thousand future multifamily units in various stages. That's, those are the things we're going to keep an eye on because again, there's got to be, we, there has to be a need for it. They, they're going to have to start seeing some, some folks that are wanting that there, that change. And, and it could have because of in- interest rates or high val- high price points. I think that Bastrop is a destination district. You saw it in this area with the districts around you that, that are increasing as Bastrop is one of the fastest growing. We see yields around point two-five in a lot of that new product, which isn't real high. If, if, you know, to just as a reminder, point two-five are the yields I've been talking about. Think of those as, I like to look at as like how many homes per, per, if you see a point two-five, that's about twenty-five homes for every hundred units. Or twenty-five students for every hundred units. So a point five yield or point six yield like we're seeing in Communa Real, we've got areas in Communa Real that are point seven right now, which means seven students for every ten homes. So it does vary, and we do watch it district-wide for different areas. Getting into enrollment projections, you can see next year's kindergarten enrollment, I forecast about nine hundred and thirty students. Your capture rate, so what we look at from a birth perspective is based on zip codes. The state allows us to get birth rate data at the zip code level. That's the smallest geography. Now zip codes don't perfectly see to school districts. So we have to just estimate what, so we figure what we call a capture rate. So how many births were there in the zip codes that mostly represent Bastrop? And then five years la- later, what was that kindergarten enrollment? You can see that, that one point three-nine, one point three-seven the last two years. That's a hundred and thirty-nine percent capture rate. And, and what, and really that's happening because a lot of those students, first of all, aren't, aren't in the zip codes or they, they didn't li- live in Bastrop when they were born. And, and, and that's going to increase as well. And then over time, we think that'll slow down, which is why in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, when you're seeing a thousand forty-nine kindergarten students, that capture rate's a hundred and fourteen instead of one thirty-seven. Well, your base has grown significantly at that, at that point. So you're going to see a little, little bit different trend. Plus, I think a lot more are going to be born in, in this area because of the growth. My enrollment forecast for next year is about four hundred and eighty-two students, averaging about five hundred for the next two or three, three years. I think things could be a little slower than what we've seen. And then I think you're going to see it pick back up. I think you easily get to seven hundred students a, a year. With the housing that you have out there, we get going. If we get back up to, not back to, but when you, I think that you could get to fifteen hundred homes a year eventually. And when, when you get there, you're going to see that, that strong, that stronger growth. We've got a forecast of enrollment here for all your campuses. Now this does, does include our forecast for Adelton. We do have some yellow on there that we're trying to gradually work off. It's taking some time, but your mid- middle schools are looking pretty good now with the boundaries that we've created. And I think that what you'll see here, that, that trend there, that, you know, about seven hundred students a year. You can see where, where that tracks through each of the levels. You know, we see some strong exiting and entering class sizes that can cause swings as well. So again, increased business in the MSA is driving, driving enrollment. Thirty-three percent of your tran- your deed transactions were new homes. That's a pretty, pretty high percentage. You've got forty-eight hun- forty-eight hundred vacant lots. And remember with that, there's fifteen hundred more being worked on. So I think this summer, there's going to be plump, plenty of lots for builders. The developers think they're going to show up. So it's just a matter of getting the, the home buyers out, out, out there. I think sixteen thousand four hundred students and approaching twenty thousand students in ten years, which was crazy from when we first started working together, Barry. But I think it's real possible by thirty-four, thirty-five.
Any questions?
Any questions on the board?
Can you go back one, one slide?
I could sure try.
I was, I was looking at that. So if we'll take Mina, and what you're saying is the twen- okay, so the twenty-four, twenty-five, the enrollment was eight hundred and two students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What I have here, and I apologize because I'm not quite sure where I got this from, but it says April fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Right now, Mina looks at eight hundred and twenty-nine? So, I mean, we're already there. Would, would those need to be adjusted?
So what happens is our number, our twenty-four, twenty-five numbers are based on your P EAM snapshot date. We work October to October. So that's your October enrollment for, for Mina. A year from now, that, so that six hundred and forty-one that you see there is what we're forecasting for next October. Now that's lower, but remember we adjusted boundaries.
Right, right.
So Outon wasn't part of the numbers there.
Right, okay. But again, those aren't really set in stone because we don't, I mean, you could get a good guess with your crystal ball. But for instance, Communa Real could be because of that one subdivision.
I, I use an eight ball, not a. I'm old, but I'd certainly think, yeah, there, there could be some things that happen. You know, I think transfer patterns can change. When, when you redraw boundaries, oftentimes the transfer patterns also kind of change a little bit. So there's things that could happen that, that could make that happen, sure.
And so Mike, if we have then, I mean, let's, for instance, Communa Real stays at eight hundred, whatever it may be. But then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we've already budgeted and there it is. And all of a sudden, twenty-six, twenty-seven, they go up a hundred kids. What happens? No. In twenty, this, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. The budget's already set for, let's say, eight hundred. And it's hypothetical, but the budget's set for eight hundred. We've got eight hundred. Uh, September twenty-twenty-five, let's say there's eight hundred and seventy-five or eight hundred and fifty. Let's not, I mean, that's realistic because of that one subdivision that might be going out there. How does that mess with your budget? Or what happens in that case?
Yeah, to address that concern, and I think maybe with that particular principle, in October, if our number's low, if his number is, you know, if it's, let's see, instead of eight, uh, seven twenty-nine, it's seven fifty-nine or whatever.
Yeah.
Look, if I'm reading that correctly, then we'd adjust it up. It's about eighty-something dollars per student. So if I had three hundred kids, it's eight thousand dollars. But really, on a hundred and thirty-seven million dollar budget, it doesn't, doesn't move the needle a whole lot because most of our budget's payroll. So to answer your question, we just adjust it up.
Okay, and more staff is, I mean, hurry up and hire more staff? Get another, how many APs do they?
Yeah, we're opening a elementary.
Right.
And then the following, we're opening another one. So that shifting and we'll be talking boundaries and all that. So you're shifting, I think Collin Oaks possibly next year is what, going to be two hundred students less?
Yes, six, six forty-one.
Adelton, yeah, opens up and, and you know, and they're full there busting at the seams, so.
If, if an elementary school has, oh, my understanding, if it have eight hundred or more students, they have two assistant principal, assistant principals or APs?
So we used that last year when we were going through the budget development process because we had essentially, we started with an eight million dollar deficit. So we had to identify a marker to help us make the decision about a second AP or not. And so, you know, eight hundred was a viable number. That doesn't mean to say that going forward that we would necessarily keep that number. So that, that'll just be.
Okay, so if, well, let's just take that as, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. If we take that eight hundred and let's say, starting of the school year, whatever, it comes out, you know, I live out in Red Rock, so Red Rock Elementary has two APs. And boundary switch, I don't think it'll be during the school year, but boundary switch or something like that. And now they fall under the AP. Do you take, I mean, they fall under the AP, uh, eight hundred. You don't take away?
No, no, not, not.
They, once they got two, they got two.
Well, something very dramatic would have to happen. They're not going to lose significant numbers of students in one year. But no, that would.
Or one year to the next?
That would be disruptive. But you see if they're balloon bonded at seven ninety-seven, they're not at eight hundred. But we know they're going to hit that very soon, probably after the start of the year. So they'll have a second AP.
Starting in the se- okay, starting the year.
But with, you know, with Adelton at five hundred, it's not likely that they're going to grow.
Right. What, does Emile have, I mean, I'm going to pick on Emile, has six hundred. Do they have two or one?
They have one.
They have one, okay. And hopefully we'll have.
And an MTSS.
Yeah, yeah. You read my mind. So they'll have, and I'm looking at Mike, so it's like, yeah, they'll have.
That's the plan.
Okay, have MTSS, okay.
Yeah, and sometimes those ratios work for or against you, you know, depending on you're just above or below. You have to base it off something, you know, I have to, you know, work, move forward. They have to staff, you know, and the best thing we can use, I mean, Zonda's typically pretty close and a good partner to have. So we work off that for now and then adjust.
And the same goes for staffing, like teachers in the classroom. You know, we already know, you know, how many first graders we're expecting at, you know, Colony Oaks or Communa Real and how many, how many slots we have available in each class. And so we watch that and then we, okay, we're going to have to allocate another F T U because it looks like it's growing faster than we anticipated. Or it's not, we're not, you know, we have more teachers than we need. So now we can move one to another campus. Does that become that criteria? That's the standard part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more questions for Rocky from the board? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming out.
Take care.
All right, thanks guys.
Hey, Rocky, youth is a state of mind, by the way. Youth is a state of mind, by the way. All right, moving along here to our curriculum report, teacher incentive allotment. Jennifer Everly, our chief academic officer, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, school board and Mr. Edwards. I'm here tonight to present an exciting opportunity for our district. The teacher incentive allotment through TEA provides additional opportunities for our district to recruit, retain and reward staff. This evening, I'm going to give you a high-level overview. Just know this is high level. There's lots of details and updates to come, but we wanted to go ahead and present this to you tonight. So TIA was established to address a couple of main issues. One would be the high teacher turnover, as well as making sure that we've got our strongest teachers at our highest needs campuses. So with that, TEA established the teacher incentive allotment, which the whole goal is to recruit, retain and reward our staff members. So in our region, you see on the map up here, there's lots of districts that are already in some form of the implementation process. So in our green area, those are systems that are fully implemented. This is a multi-year process, so they're pretty far down the road. Yellow and that bluish color are all in some phase of implementation. The pink color is where B I S D is at, and so we're in the initial development stages. And then that gray are school districts that have not yet initiated any participation in TIA. So there's good things, there's lots of good things on this chart. One is that there's lots of school districts that are ahead of us in this that we're able to learn from. And on the other side, there are lots of our surrounding districts that are competitors to us when we're recruiting and retaining teachers that have not yet jumped into TIA, which gives us another opportunity as we're going out to recruiting to have discussions with our teachers. So with that, teachers can earn distinctions two different ways. One is through our local designation system. The other, the other is through national board certification. They can earn three levels of distinction, recognize, exemplary and masters. With that comes a base level allotment for each one of these distinctions. Now it starts with the base level that's up there under each distinction. And then they have what they call multipliers based on high needs. So it's looking at our economically disadvantaged students. And it's also looking at rural schools and adding those multipliers and give that additional money to that allotment. So for instance, in B I S D, if you look down in the bottom right corner, it'll give you the average allotment that would be generated per distinction for the district. So I'm going to use recognized as the example. On average, in our district, a teacher that gets a recognized distinction brings a teacher allotment, incentive allotment of forty-five hundred dollars. Now let me show you where this changes. It actually goes by campuses. So when you look at a campus like Cedar Creek Elementary, you take into account that their number of economically disadvantaged students and you also look that they are considered a rural school attording to TEA. The allotment that said, that's, that set that and generated for a recognized status is almost fifty-eight hundred dollars. Now, as compared to Mina, which the economically disadvantaged numbers are lower and they are considered by TEA standards, don't laugh at me, are considered an urban campus. They, I don't set this, TEA does, guys. Their recognized distinction generates almost a forty-four hundred dollar allotment. So I'm going back to what they have said their original goal was, was to recruit, retain and award our teachers and to keep them in the profession and keep them at our highest needs campuses. So with that, some key points that I want to make sure you walk away with tonight. One, there are three key distinctions that teachers can earn, recognize, exemplary and masters. Each distinction comes with an allotment based on their campus. TEA does update this yearly. They're looking at the data, they put out the numbers, not me, they put out the numbers and that's generated by high needs and our rural campuses. With that also, ninety percent of the funding goes straight towards that teacher compensation. The other ten percent is used at the district level to recruit and retain staff and to keep our up, keep of the TIA system. And then the other great thing about this, because if you remember back at the beginning, they said part of it was to keep teachers in the profession. Well, data shows that teachers leave within five years. So this distinction, once they get it and the allotment that comes with them follows them for five years as long as they stay in a teaching assignment. So that's kind of the key high-level overviews of the system itself. So let's talk about our approval process. I want to just reiterate, our approval process is a multi-year process. This is not something that's done within a couple of months or within a year. And it takes two different levels. One is the application and the second is our systems approval. So currently, right now, we're in this application process. We're looking at current systems we have in place. We're making sure that we're getting things down in a handbook. We're going to start communicating plans out. The systems application is the first part. Then next year in twenty-five, twenty-six becomes our data, data collection year. And what happens is we take all this data that's required by the teacher incentive allotment and we submit it to Texas Tech and they look at the validity of our system. So they're looking at how effective our teaching is. They're looking at our teacher approvals, they're looking at our student growth data and they make a determination on the final approval for our TIA implementation, which comes during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. It is a multi, that's your number three. So with that full systems approval, also comes our first round of distinctions for teachers with the first official payout being by August of twenty-twenty-seven. So within that, what I also wonder, we're waiting, we're working through the full systems approval. As we're working through that process, we're also expanding it and making modifications as we go on each year. So with that, I do just want to iterate as we wrap this up. This is a high-level overview tonight. This is also a multi-year process that we're going to be going through with the whole thing being our opportunity to recruit and retain the best teachers for our kids here in B I S D. And I'll take any questions you have right now.
Hi Jennifer, I do have some questions about this one.
Yes.
So knowing that other cohorts, that obviously we're in a different cohort and we have best practices that are out there from other districts, do you have, or can you speculate on the percentage of folks that could receive these three different classifications that you mentioned in our district? Or is that too early? Are we too early to be?
Well, I can always get you information from other districts, constantly looking at them. What TEA says, their kind of guidance is what they're looking at is recognized is like thirty-three percent. Exemplary is around the, around the fifteen to twenty percent of staff. And then the masters teacher, the. percent of staff, and then the masters teacher, that, that upper level band is about five percent. Now, that's, that's T A. Ours may fluctuate one way or another, just depending, and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is about essentially, well, I don't know that you know this yet, but when, when we go into the application process, is there a minimum requirement for each of our teachers to, so for example, is it two-year teaching requirement, is there, you know, three-year teaching requirement, or is it just even, even our new hires?
It's based by teaching assignment, so if I'm, say I'm a fifth grade teacher, it's gonna look at my teacher appraisal, and it's gonna look at our student growth measure, and it's gonna use that to make the distinction. So all teachers in that assignment, that's what they're-
Okay.
Yeah, this is, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think I'm confused. So in order, and you may not be able to say this yet, in order to receive a recognized, or the, it only, it solely depends on your appraisal and where you're teaching?
Well, it, it's determinate on your appraisal and the student growth measure, so it's looking at student achievement.
I see.
So if it's, if it may be growth on star from one year to the next, it may be their map assessment, but it's looking at, are we growing students? Because that's, that's our end goal evolved, right?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. This is more for Mike, though. In the current legislation, Mike, for funding, am I right that there's something to fortify this? So another round of funding to fortify this program?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions? Okay, more information to come on this. I'm gonna join him tonight. We're gonna do some presenting here, so let's see. Okay, good evening, school board and Mr. Edwards. Chris and I are here tonight to talk about an exciting grant opportunity that will help amplify the great work that's already happening in B I S D.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Edwards and Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to present for the first time at a district board meeting about this exciting partnership that's gonna significantly enhance our students' learning experiences and expand access to valuable resources.
It's exciting to share this opportunity that directly aligns with our core mission and our why. Their future is our focus.
So with the rapid pace of technological advancement demands that, it demands that we equip our students with not just knowledge, but also the skills to navigate and thrive in a digital future. Strong leadership at all levels is necessary to realize this vision.
And this isn't just about using devices, it's about leveraging technology to empower critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration, the very skills our students will need to solve the challenges of tomorrow.
So investing in partnerships that enhance our capacity for tech integration is an investment in our students' future success. So the Verizon Innovative Learning Schools program, or VILS program as I'm gonna call it, 'cause that's a mouthful, is a partnership between Verizon and Digital Promise, which is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to expand opportunities for all learners through technology and leadership development in school districts. So the Digital Promise Support Team works side by side with schools and districts to empower educators and leaders to transform our technology practices and creating more engaging and effective learning experiences for our students.
So what makes this partnership so compelling is its direct alignment to our existing goals. With many of our curriculum resources and state assessments moving to online, we've been working hard to build capacity in technology integration, and VILS just offers us a structured and supportive pathway to accelerate this work.
And again, it's not just about getting technology, it's about developing expertise and leadership at all levels to use it effectively and sustainably. The comprehensive support provided by this VILS partnership will allow us to build a strong foundation for tech integration across the district. So I'm gonna talk you through a little bit about the journey, this application process. We, we started with curriculum instruction, initiating the application process in May of last year. We recognized this had a lot of potential benefits for our students and district. And so following the district application, then we worked closely with all of our secondary campuses to develop strong individual applications, highlighting their unique school needs and visions. Following that, principal interviews and then onsite visits provided an opportunity for us to showcase the great work already happening at our schools and allowed the dedication and commitment of our campus and district teams to really shine through. And then in December of last year, we received notification that two schools in Bastrop I S D had been accepted into the upcoming Cohort Twelve of the VILS program. But before we reveal that information, I do wanna talk about the results of these site visits, because, you know, it's really, it's a really valuable opportunity for, you know, external visitors to come and see what you're doing and kind of give you that reflective feedback and recognize a lot of the hard work happening. And so they really praised our proactive approach to technology management at our campuses and acknowledged some best practices that we have in place. And especially, they were impressed by kind of our collaborative spirit between district and campus leadership. We have these boot-up technology committee steering meetings, you know, where we work very collaboratively between my department, I T services, and the campuses, and they were really impressed by how we had such a strong collaborative leadership foundation. And so that just reinforced that we were really on the right track, and that this VILS partnership can really elevate us to the next level. So without further ado, I wanna announce that we're in, so Bastrop I S D joins Cohort Twelve with Bastrop Middle School and Cedar Creek Middle School. And so this is such a significant achievement and opportunity for our district, and it just is a testament to the hard work and dedication of our, our staff and administrators. So we're so excited about this and the potential that it holds for, you know, not only the students and educators at those two campuses, but across the district. And so the two campus principals, Ms. Riza Cooper and Ms. Tiffany Pearson, are already leading the way through the planning and preparations for the launch of this partnership next school year. So we definitely also want to recognize them for their leadership and commitment to our students, so I'd love to give them a round of applause. They've waited all night for that moment, so. And so to speak on expanding the impact, so we're starting at these two campuses, but we see this as a district-wide opportunity. The campuses not selected for Cohort Twelve were actually offered an expedited application process to enter a future cohort for Cohort Thirteen, and so this really goes to show the, the strength and, and opportunity that those partners saw here. And this kind of initial implementation is gonna give us some really good insights that we can apply across the board in terms of our systems and strategies. And so that's the goal, is to leverage this partnership to increase success across the district. And so to get into some of the, the partnership benefits, and so a significant benefit is the provision of devices, which will be Chromebooks, for both students and teachers at those campuses, and importantly, these devices are going to have built-in five G connectivity. So that's gonna address, address a critical issue for online access outside of school hours, that, you know, we may have students without reliable home internet or connectivity in our community. So this is a big game changer for student access. It also includes leadership training for administrators and teachers, kind of building up those skills and knowledge to, you know, leverage technology in their roles. There's also funding for support for technology integration coach and campus-based I T support roles that will allow for really strong school-wide information, transformation and impact. And it's not just the adults who will be empowered as leaders, there's also the development of a student tech team that's going to allow our students to lead and build a culture of digital citizenship at their school as well. So this is really gonna contribute to our ability to build an engaging, equitable, and future-focused education for our students.
Thank you. The students that get the devices, is there training for them, that they, they know whatever they look up at home, as soon as they walk in that school, it can be accessed?
Absolutely. So our devices will be just as safe as, yeah.
You're right, okay.
Yeah, they'll be just as safe as devices we currently use, and, and we will absolutely continue the digital, digital citizenship training that we work with students currently, with that added layer of understanding that, you know, there is another layer of connectivity with these devices. So, you know, you might be out and about, but, you know, be aware of your surroundings, you know, if you just have a laptop out at the bus stop or something, you know, so additional layers of that will be added to, to our strategy with that. But, you know, great question. And so for our next steps, we're planning for the successful launch in the upcoming school year. And so we're, our current focus is that strategic and thoughtful rollout of both student and teacher devices. As you, as you mentioned, we're thinking through all those different parts and pieces to make that a smooth process. And so we're really excited about the opportunity. It's a, it's a multi-year commitment, and it's gonna give us the opportunity to create lasting change. And so our, our main goal, and we're, we're already successfully on our way for this, is we want Bastrop I S to be, I S D to be a model standout leader in transformative technology integration, both within this VILS program and beyond. And so we are well on our way. We've gotten great feedback early on in this partnership that we're, they're like, wow, Bastrop is really, you know, meeting and beating deadlines and thorough in our work, and so we wanna continue that and really stand out. So thanks for listening, and I'd love to open the floor for any other questions. Yes, ma'am.
I, I think this is wonderful, it's great. However, I'm also hearing sometimes in the media that we're too, I don't have my cellphone, you know, we're too connected. And, you know, there's almost a push to go now, get away from the technology. So how do you teach the kids? How do you tell the students, don't, you know, two o'clock in the morning, you really need to put it down?
Absolutely. I think it's, there's a multifaceted answer to that question. So, you know, community engagement, parent engagement, making sure parents understand, you know, what these devices can and can't do, what digital balance looks like, and then even within the classroom, the idea of blended learning, so a mix of online, in-person collaborative learning. We know that the, the human element of learning is, is so important, so it's, it's not just kids on computers for an hour, it's really strategically and powerfully leveraging that technology when appropriate. But the, the teacher, the educator, the human is the, the critical point of the education process, for sure.
And about the total value, does anybody know what this multi-year commitment is worth?
I don't have the, it's significant. I don't have the number, but I can definitely, I can provide that.
Very good. Good job, and principals especially, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving along to our human resource report and police department report, they're for information only. Are there any questions about those two reports from anybody on the board?
First one would be the human resources.
Ms. Green.
Is that gonna be Jennifer, I think?
Ms. Green.
Oh, Ms. Green. Has to do with star testing and map testing and all that. I don't know if that's, that's what I figured. I'm learning! I know. Oh, well, I'm gonna have to get better with syncing my questions with the agenda. So, and I think I asked this, in the information it, that we were given, okay, now see, I'm gonna go to jump with you. Special programs and services that reported that six hundred and fifty-eight evaluations have been completed from, I think, from the beginning of school year. And my question is, that sure does seem to be a lot of testing, assessing, and so how does that interrupt, or how does that go along with, with, with teaching the children, the students? It just seems like we're only in school for a hundred and eighty days. Okay, see, I told you. I jumped on ya.
So the, the evaluation and testing done by the special education department is totally different from star and map and those sorts of things.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the testing that we do is to determine if students have the presence of a learning disability or not, or other types of disabilities. So it's not really related. Those assessments do inform the campuses, like on who, how kids are doing, it looks at their growth, and if they're struggling, those assessments are vital in letting us know that a kid is struggling, so that they can refer them for special education testing. And special education testing is done by a diagnostician or licensed specialist in school psychology, and it's typically just a one-on-one situation where the kiddo gets pulled. I don't know how long testing lasts in all, but it's anywhere from an hour to two and a half, maybe. They don't pull them at one time, they go through and pull them periodically and do those short assessments with them.
Is there coordination with the teacher also, who is, I mean, who the student is with the teacher week after week, and as far as interviewing or having a conference with the teacher and saying, hey, this student is advancing, not advancing, or where do we go with that?
So a lot of that information comes through from the initial referral packet that the teachers and the campus send over to our department for analysis to see if a student should be tested. And then if a student is gonna be tested, I would say, I don't know, a lot of the data comes from the teacher. So they're gonna, they're exploring all sorts of different types of potential disabilities, from like a learning disability to an emotional disturbance, or autism, or what have you. So when they start that, they have a series of questionnaires that they distribute to the, all the teachers, the parents, and, and the student themselves fill out a rating or questionnaire.
It just seems like an awful lot of testing, that's all, six hundred.
Big population.
Yeah.
I mean, it's growing. That number's probably gonna keep going up.
And that's our, I believe that number is our initial evaluation. So those are students that are freshly qualifying for special education. We have to test students that qualify every three years. So on top of the six hundred and ninety-four assessments we've done, we've got about twenty-one hundred kids in special education right now. About seven hundred more assessments were done as part of their three-year reevaluate. So a third of the students are tested that already qualify every year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll be on next.
Thank you for jumping in, we appreciate it.
No problem.
I think I, now I have chief police. I've got a question on the police, the police department deport. Again, living out in Red Rock, I have, you know, I own twenty sometimes, whatever that is, and I saw that big building that is being constructed next to that, next to the elementary school. I've heard church, I've heard halfway house, I've heard, I mean, do we know what it is, and, and how involved do we need to get if?
oversees all that planning out there. It's currently right next to Red Rock Elementary. It's a church being built, and it's a very large church. They were looking at at one point, making it a, he had it labeled on the plan as a Red Rock school. He had to say no, because you didn't meet fire code and fire standards to have a school, because he's like, we force our public schools or any other schools to meet certain standards. For you to have a school, you have to meet the certain same standards, so school's been taken out of it. There are currently two homes being built on site, but it is for, as far as he knows, it's for the pasture or another person that works there. There is fifteen half-acre lots that are planned to be in neighborhood. According to Assistant Keith Ackerman, that if it was, he hasn't heard the, the rumors of potentially substance abuse housing or any kind of thing like that. He said, again, if that's something that's done, it's labeled as transient housing, and they're have to meet certain fire standards, they have to be sprinkled and everything else. So nobody's come to him with those kind of plans, so as of now, it's just a large church. The church is already located out there in Red Rock, it's smaller. They're just building a larger version.
Is there any type of restriction as far as what, what kind of housing can be next to a elementary school, or elementary school period, or, you know, any type of school?
No, so the county doesn't have any of that kind of stuff, unless it was going to be labeled truly as a halfway house. So once you get into those, yeah, there's standards that have to be made, but this isn't, there've been no plans for that, there've been no requests for that. So currently, it's, right now, it's the church. That's what, that's all we know. They potentially could have a neighborhood in front of it of regular residential.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's not a bad thing, too, especially if we have to evacuate the kids, provides another large shelter very close by, so.
My concern was if it was drug and alcohol, or some type of perhaps habitat that may not be safe for children.
As soon as he, if anything were to come, he would obviously notify us. Got a great working relationship, and what we have to do.
Thanks.
All right. Moving along to our consent agenda, would any board member like to pull any consent agenda item for discussion?
I have questions on, on F. The materials allotment antique certification- The materials allotment antique certification form.
Mr. Edwards, who can answer those questions?
Okay. That would be you.
That's me, yep.
There was a, there's, and I actually kind of logged in too. I didn't go very far because it was asking me some stuff and I thought, ooh, I could get in trouble if I answer stuff. Does TEA, how do they verify the survey, the answers to the survey? How do they, I mean, I'm going to assume the district is going to answer that yes, all these materials is, you know, they're available to the students and it does meet teaks, but does TA ever come and, and verify that? I mean, what's the purpose of the survey?
Well, the purpose of the survey is for us to, to say exactly what materials we are going to be using in the upcoming year. And this is our certification to them, saying that we are going to use these and we are going to follow through with them.
Okay. Do they ever come and look?
We've had TEA come in to do just some partnerships with us and see our work in action. But specifically around that, no, they have the ability to come in and audit lesson plans and look at those, but that's not something this serves as our, with you guys signing off on it and approve it, that it serves as our, this is what we plan to do for the upcoming year regarding our curriculum.
Yeah, that's why I was looking at it. I thought, ooh, well, I don't think I have to sign it. I gotta sign enough returns, so never mind. Something along in that too, and I, I didn't dive down into it. Oh, there was a, a survey, a question, and it says on a scale of zero to 10, how effectively do you believe IMRA reports support LEA adoption of high quality? And you did seven.
I did a seven. Yes, I did.
Can you explain?
There's, I, looking at this, we have teachers and administrators who have sat on the committees to review the instructional materials from TEA. And the feedback that I've given them is they need to, there are certain instructional strategies that the TEA would like us to all be grounded in, but our feedback is given, if they're going to have people review the materials, we really want all those people to be trained in those strategies too, so we're all looking through the same lens. And that's why I rated it a seven, was because I want them to train the people up even more so that we're all on the same page.
Okay. Okay. And this might just be a general question, but on the, on the instruction and materials curriculum such as that, how does the district keep inappropriate material, age inappropriate material out of the classrooms, out of the curriculum?
We, all of our things that are on here are already TEA approved. They've gone through, like Amplify, Eureka have already gone through vetting. We also go through as a curriculum team and vet all of the things that, all of the reading material and things that are being put out there too. But it's going through, it goes through multi-layers of looking at materials.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving along to our action items here. Consider approval of memorandum of agreement between BISD and Baylor University. Derek, please join us again. Mr. Everly, our Director of Special Programs and Services.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. I believe there's only, I only know of one Baylor Bear that's on the board. So this will be your moment, this is your moment to shine, Mr. Dillon, trustee Dillon. This is your moment to shine. What I, that's right. What I have for your consideration tonight is a memorandum of understanding between Baylor University and the school district for the placement of communication disorders internships, which is a speech language pathologist, which is always our highest need in our department.
Questions from Mr. Everly.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Bashrop ISD and Baylor University as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Go Bears. All right. We're going to go into, consider approval of mascot and colors for Adelton Elementary, Creekside Middle School and Riverside Middle School. Cassie Baldrus, Director of Communications and Marketing.
Hi, good evening. Okay, is this ready? So yes, I'm going to present tonight our options for colors and mascots for Adelton, Creekside and Riverside for your approval. Just a little bit of background, y'all already approved the names, so now we get to do the fun part. So back about a month ago, we started a process, we sent out surveys to our families, incoming families to these three schools. That included an option for nominations for a mascot and also if anyone had interest on being on those committees. So we wanted to make sure that we give everybody equal access to be on the committees to make these decisions. And then after that, the committees met, actually on the same day, and they decided on the top three mascots for each school. Sorry. And then they also picked top three color combinations for each school. And then those went forward in a second survey to all of those same people that got the first one to choose which ones we're going to present tonight. So for Adelton, the initial survey, we got 50 total mascot nominations. And then whenever we did the final survey, we received 189 responses. So for the mascot, the top response was for armadillos with 77 votes. The next in line was lions and axolotls. And then the color combinations, we had orange and navy receive the top votes with 85. And then you can see the others below there. So our suggestion for Adelton Elementary would be the mascot of the armadillos and the colors of orange and navy. And that orange, that was the color we put forward for all of the options for Adelton just because that is going to be the color that's on the school. All right. Next up, Creekside Middle School. We had 52 different nominations. And then in that final response, 361. So you'll see a lot more in the middle schools because staff are included in that one because we knew who the staff were. And we also included students. So hawks received the most votes at 152, keeping with the bird theme, followed by, we have coyotes and longhorns were some of the other options. And then the color is blue and silver was the top color there with 182 votes. And so we are moving forward presenting mascot of hawks and colors as blue and silver. And same thing, the colors that we presented for Creekside, we did blue as all the options because it goes with what's currently in the school uniforms, all those things that have to kind of get created sooner. Riverside Middle School, we got the most input on, so 136 nominations to begin with. And then the second survey, we received 495 responses. The top vote for mascot was grizzlies with 233 votes. And then sticking with maroon and white was the top color choice with 213 votes. So we are presenting for Riverside Middle School, the grizzlies and the same maroon and white colors.
Any questions for us, Aldrus?
All right. Sounds exciting. I know that's a process you go through, so.
Yeah, after we finish this, we'll get into the fun where you actually get to see it.
Yeah, yeah. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the mascots and colors for Adelton Elementary, Creekside Middle School and Riverside Middle School as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your hard work and everybody involved to get to this point. All right. The Board of Trustees' calendar of events and the enrollment are for information only, as well as moving along here to report on the board members continuing education hours. And so per the State Board of Education rule, each board member must complete required continuing education annually. As a, as a board president, I am required to report the members that have met, exceeded, or are deficient in training requirements. Training is measured from the trustee's election appointment date or two-year anniversary of prior training. In regards to local district orientation, Carol Armstrong has completed that. She's also completed orientation of the state education code as well as post-legislative updates. Those are very exciting topics. They were, yes. Yeah. She stayed away. On the team building, all board members were involved with that. Also additional education, continuing education credits. Trustee Reese exceeded by two hours. Trustee Seacat exceeded by 5.5 hours. Trustee Matthew Mix, Chris Dillon, myself exceeded by 6.5 hours. Carol Armstrong exceeded by 7.6.75 hours. And our overachiever, who's not here tonight but always has to outshine everybody, is the legend Billy Moore with 8.5 hours. Billy really likes those classes. So also evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, all the board members completed that. Identifying and reporting abuse, trafficking and other maltreatment of children was completed by all board members, as well as school safety was completed by all board members. So that's your report on our continuing education hours. At this time, the board will now convene in the closed meeting to discuss the following items posted on the agenda this evening, followed by the Texas Government Code 551.074, Personnel Matters and Government Code 551.072, Real Property. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action that the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in this room in the open meeting. And it is now 7:50 PM and we'll, we will go into closed session. And it is now 7:50 PM and we will go into closed session. Ready? It is now 8:17 PM and the board will now reconvene into open session. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the term and probationary contracts for teachers as recommended by the administration as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The other line item there, there will be no further action from closed session this evening. Any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are none, meeting adjourned. Thank all y'all for sticking around.